I see the time is six o'clock. We're gonna put this meeting into order. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to approve the remote electronic attendance of Second Ward Alderman David Parker, Third Ward Alderman Mike Went, Sixth Ward Alderman Kevin Schoonmaker, Alderman at Large Sonia Berg, Committee of all, and City Council meetings of February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer, a second by Alderman Waldron. Roll call, please.
Alderman Went?
Present. Aye, aye.
Alderman Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Alderman Schoonmaker hasn't joined yet.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Waldron?
Aye.
I'll call Alderman Schoonmaker. Oh. Alderman Schoonmaker, would you like to vote on the remote electronic attendance? Aye, okay, I got it. Alderman Berg, here yet? No? Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. We will begin this evening with an oath of office for probationary appointment of firefighter paramedic Brendan Calata.
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. We are here on a joyous occasion to celebrate the hiring of Mr. Brendan Calata. Brendan grew up in Rochelle and graduated from Rochelle Township High School in twenty-sixteen, not very long ago. He did subsequently attend and graduate from Western Illinois University with a Bachelor of Science degree, majoring in fire protection services and minoring in supply chain management. He earned a grade point average of three-point-six, so, pretty good. He is an Illinois-certified EMTB, and he is joined this evening by numerous family girlfriend, I'm not sure which one. Girlfriend and her mother. So, with that, Mayor, I'll turn over the podium to you.
Thank you. Brendan. So, we're just gonna have one of these people. Please raise your right hand. I, Brendan Calata.
I, Brendan Calata.
I have been duly appointed to the rank of probationary firefighter.
Having been duly appointed to the rank of probationary firefighter.
Of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the State of Illinois.
And will strictly adhere to the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the City of Moline.
And the City of Moline.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary firefighter.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of probationary firefighter.
Of the Fire Department for the City of Moline, Illinois.
Of the Fire Department, the City of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thank you. So we like to give you a picture?
Yeah.
Picture, huh?
So we're gonna have you wanna go back here?
Sure.
Do you want the little plan in?
Rose one ten.
You don't have any plan. Don't be shy, plan. Once in a lifetime.
You want your camera?
That's okay, thank you.
So they hired you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a nice, yeah.
Brendan, can I have a picture of you?
Sure. Now my words coming from? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks, everybody.
Take care.
Bye. My name sounds so loud.
I was gonna say, what are you gonna do?
It was your chance, Sam.
Did Sam try to get a picture too?
No, he got the floor, he was gonna speak. Gonna give us his speech.
Nice. The next item on the agenda is a proclamation. This is one of my annual favorites, a proclamation from the National Association of Women in Construction, N-A-W-I-C, Quad City Chapter number fifty, to declare March seventh through thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, as Women in Construction Week. We have a visitor this evening that is remoting in, Julie. Can you hear us okay?
Hi.
Would you introduce?
Hi, good afternoon.
Hi, would you introduce yourself and tell us about your organization, and then we'll read part of the proclamation?
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor Akry. My name is Julie Galati, and I work at Blackcock College, but I'm a member of the Chapter Fifty National Association of Women in Construction, that's the Quad City Chapter. And so I'm a member of there, I'm actually the Scholarship Chair. So one of the things that we do when we raise money is to hand out scholarships.
Fantastic, thank you.
Do you want me?
Oh, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
Well, I didn't know, should I, do you want me to go ahead and read?
I'll have my letter.
Okay.
Is it the proclamation? Or something else? Oh, sorry, you go ahead, go.
It's for this, yeah. So on behalf of the Quad Cities Chapter Fifty, I'd like to thank the City of Moline, Mayor Akry, and the City, and City of Moline. And also known as WIC Week. MayWIC's mission is to enhance the success of women in the construction industry. We provide awareness of the opportunities available for women and emphasize the growing role of women in the construction industry. WIC Week is a time for local chapters to give back to their communities. However, Chapter Fifty does so throughout the year. We partner with local agencies such as Humility of Mary, Dress for Success, Winnie's Place, Iowa Women Lead Change, and this year we will be handing out box lunches at two of the Humility of Mary Shelter satellite locations on Sunday, March seventh, as well as collecting donations for the Quad Cities Animal Welfare Center to be delivered on Friday, March twelfth. So, thank you so much for all of your support.
Well, thank you. Do you wanna read any of the proclamations?
Sure.
Janine's gonna read it.
I would like to. Whereas MayWIC Quad Cities Chapter Number Fifty has distinguished itself for fifty-eight years as the voice of women in construction in the Quad City area, whereas MayWIC has unceasingly promoted the employment and advancement of women in the construction industry, and whereas MayWIC has sought to achieve successful results for Moline, Illinois and surrounding areas in a cooperative spirit with its organizations. Now therefore be proclaimed that Stephanie Akry, Mayor of Moline, does hereby proclaim the week of March seventh through the thirteenth as Women in Construction Week.
Thank you, thank you, Julie, to your organization as well.
Thank you so much, have a good night.
You too. Are there any questions on the agenda this evening? Hearing no questions, we're gonna dive right in. The first item is hiring and promotion firefighters. Chief Snyder will be presenting.
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. The item before you this evening is a request from the Fire Department to allow an exception to the promotion freeze and authorize me to move forward with promotional appointments as necessary to fill vacant positions. We have, and we foresee up to three resignations at a superior or high level, captains and lieutenants. Since the publication of this document, I've received a retirement notice for one of our captains, so, an attempt to be proactive has now become somewhat reactive, and so I'm asking for your approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, and we had it tied for second. I'm gonna give it to Alderman Williams this evening. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Do you have it as Alderman? She has, thank you. Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. The next item is also with the chief, Tri-City Agreement for Fire Station Electrical Upgrade.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This item before you this evening is to seek approval to enter an agreement with Tri-City Electric Company of Iowa for fire station electrical upgrades in the amount of thirty-thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. The background on this is if you recall, several meetings ago, I was before you to request authorization to initiate an agreement with the station alerting system. Once we got that, we had technicians come in and assess our buildings. Needless to say, we have varying degrees of age of our buildings, and the equipment that we're going to need for the station alerting system requires high-end Cat-six cabling. We're not in the, you know, all our speakers in our stations now are just run with coaxial cables, so, it was, we put out an RFP to see if we could get a couple good quality quotes back. We had one company, Tri-City Electric, that met all the requirements, and we recommend approval of a contract with Tri-City Electric.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, a second by Alderman Potter. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Parker?
Yeah, I, this is great, yeah, absolutely, I'm gonna support this, but my question is, did we ever get the generator up and running and permanently in place at the main station, central station?
Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, that'll be installed in March. The older generator is currently the backup. We fixed the fuel system that supports it, but we have got the new generator on order, if not already shipped. We've got a contract ready to go, and the construction will start March first.
Alderman Parker?
Just so we all know, what was the cost of that, Marty?
It won't exceed a hundred thousand dollars, I think it's gonna be close to ninety total.
Thank you.
I'll have more information for you later.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. The next item would be presented by our chief goal, equitable sharing agreement.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Council. The federal equitable sharing agreement has come before you on an annual basis. That agreement is entered into amongst the federal government, the Moline Police Department, and the City of Moline, and set forth the requirements for participation in the federal equitable sharing program, and restrictions upon the use of federally forfeited funds, property, and interest earned, which are equitably shared with participating law enforcement agencies. By submitting this certificate, we are reporting to the use of last year's funds and agreeing that we will be bound by the guide to equitable sharing and all subsequent updates in this agreement and the sections of the Code of Federal Regulations. So as you see in the report, we didn't spend much money. Typically, the federal forfeited funds are fairly low, and I usually use those to train or provide equipment to the, typically the units that seize those monies. So, I think we only spent about three-hundred-and-fifty dollars last year, so attached is that and the certificate that we will submit within sixty days, so I would recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, a second by Alderman Williams. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries, thank you, Chief. The next item, item four, is the twenty-twenty-one volume cap. This will be presented by Carol Barnes, our Finance Director.
Thank you, Your Honor, can you hear me?
We can, thank you, Carol.
The resolution before you tonight is for a request to reallocate the city's home rule volume cap for private activity bonds to the Quad Cities Regional Economic Authority in the amount of four-point-six million dollars, and it's being used to support projects that will provide job opportunities and new investments. Crida is the only agency to request the city's two-thousand-and-twenty-one volume cap this year and has a mutually beneficial relationship with the city, county, and other regional development authorities to best utilize this resource for the benefit of the entire region. If the city does not obligate this allocation by May first, it will automatically be turned over to the State of Illinois to be reallocated on a statewide basis. Staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Potter, and a second by Alderman Went. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Thank you, Carol. The next item is also presented by Carol, First Midwest Bank Line of Credit renewal.
Thank you, Your Honor. Annually since two-thousand-and-five, the city has renewed an unsecured revolving line of credit with First Midwest Bank to be drawn against for cash flow purposes if needed throughout the year. Our current line of credit is for two-point-nine million dollars. It is unsecured, and the interest floats with the prime rate with point-five percent increase over the prime rate, for a total of three-point-seven-five percent currently. And there is a three-hundred-and-eighty-five-dollar loan processing fee, and I might mention, last year we didn't utilize this at all, it's just kind of a safeguard in case we would happen to need it, and with that, staff would recommend approval.
Motion to approve, Parker? Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, and a second by Alderman Potter. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. The next item is tip number seven, Water Anticipation Note, twenty-twenty-one A.
Again, thank you, Your Honor. The next two items kinda go hand in hand, but I am going to go through them separately. And the first one before you tonight is a special ordinance providing for the issuance of a revenue anticipation note from the city's water fund. We use the, we are requesting the water fund's excess reserves to help address tip number seven's short-term cash flow needs, and it will allow for timely debt service payments to be made to tip number seven for one more year. The revenue anticipation notes being recommended will be for a ten-year term at an interest rate of one-point-three-five percent, with a final balloon payment made on March first of two-thousand-and-thirty-one. The water fund does have sufficient excess reserves in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy dollars, the loan to tip number seven, and without the issuance of these revenue anticipation notes, cash advances would be needed from the general fund in order to help cash flow tip seven. And with that, staff recommends approval.
Move to approve, Went.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Went, and a second by Alderman Moyer. Any discussion? Alderman Parker?
Remind me again, what is tip seven?
Tip number seven is for the Airport Authority Airport Business Park.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. The next item is similar, tip number seven, Water, WPC Anticipation Note, twenty-twenty-one B.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, this is a special ordinance providing for the issuance of a revenue anticipation note from WPC, using the excess reserves to help address tip number seven cash flow needs. Again, this revenue anticipation note is also for a ten-year term at an annual interest rate of one-point-three-five percent and a final balloon payment of March first, two-thousand-and-thirty-one. And the total amount that will be requested is three-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars, and staff recommends approval.
Move to approve, Went.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Went, a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg? Alderman Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Thank you, Carol. The next item?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. The next item will be presented by Joe Kuhlbeck, actually, as the next four items. It's item number eight, Project thirteen-fifty-one, twenty-twenty-one Inlet and Catch Basin Replacement Program. Joe?
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. Tonight I have in front of you a resolution to approve a contract with Walter D. Lodd. They were the lowest and responsible bidder for our inlet and catch basin replacement program. This is part of our, one of our maintenance programs for the twenty-twenty-one CIP. We had budgeted a hundred thousand dollars. Lodd was our lowest bid of eighty-two-thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-five. I would like Council's approval to spend up to the hundred thousand dollar budget. We'll word that in the Council Bill going forward, but for these maintenance projects, spending up to our budget amount would allow us to maximize our twenty-twenty-one CIP. With that, staff is recommending approval.
Motion to approve. To approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, a second by Alderman Went. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Next item, item nine, Project thirteen-fifty-nine Retaining Wall Removal, Fifty-third Street, Jane Adams School. Joe?
Thank you. This was a fun one, I know we talked about it at our last meeting. This project was scheduled for our twenty-twenty-one CIP budget. The winning bidder was Five Cities, yeah, Five Cities Construction Company. Their winning bid was thirty-two-thousand, five-hundred-and-ten dollars and sixty-five cents. This was a project that we had discussed with the school district. We came up with some, gave them options to replace the retaining wall, to remove it, ingrate the hill, remove trees. It also includes us removing a backstop that's currently up there and installing at length of fence to help with playground balls rolling down the hill and whatnot, but this was the, this is the direction we all agreed to. The winning bid was stated there with Five Cities Engineering, or Five Cities Construction, and staff is recommending approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Parker?
So, Joe, when are you gonna do this? Are you waiting till school's out, or are you gonna do it while school's in session?
We'll wait till school's out and do it through the summer. Really shouldn't have any issues getting, getting good, getting the project on the summer. Also be a good time later in the summer to get seed planted, a better growing season towards late summer, but it'll, this'll be completed outside of school, being in session.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alderman Went?
Joe, it'll remind me, I think that we had budgeted seventy thousand for this, so this will give us a little bit of flexibility with some of our other projects coming out of the CIP this year, right? Correct, and so far our projects have come in under budget, so we're looking really good there, we're happy that we're getting good numbers. Yeah, this gives us some flexibility to add to projects later this construction season. We're working to identify some possible additional asphalt resurfacing sites or any other CIP projects that we may come up with to spend down some of our savings, hopefully, and hopefully this continues through the bid season. Great to hear, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Next item, ten, Project thirteen-forty-five, Forty-Ninth Street, north of Twelfth Avenue. Joe?
Thank you, Your Honor. This project is a reconstruction with utilities on site. It is a red water site for our utility priorities. We had budgeted six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, again, this one came in under budget. Walter D. Lodd was our lowest and most responsible bidder at four-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand, thirty-two dollars. Again, the savings is going, and I'll bring together a, as I get, as we get more of these, we'll bring, we'll update the savings where we're at in budget on our CIP, what we budgeted versus what our bids are coming in at, so we have an idea where we're saving money, where we may be spending more money, so I'll keep everybody in loop on that, but staff is recommending approval of this contract with Walter D. Lodd for this reconstruction project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Parker?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have all these questions, but...
No, don't ever, sorry for asking these questions.
Yeah, no, so, I just, Joe, I know this is the case, and I know a lot is, you know, they do a lot for us, but we're running all these bids through our responsible bidder ordinance now that it's in place, aren't we?
Yeah, yes, we are.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoonmaker.
Aye.
Walton.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you very much, Joe. Oh, wait, you've got one more for you.
You're welcome. I got one more, yep.
All right, this is a big one. Okay, hiring and promotion, traffic operations worker. Joe?
Yep, thank you, your honor. Um, the engineering division is requesting council grant an exception to the hiring freeze and authorize engineering and human resources to move forward with the process to hire the traffic worker, or traffic operations worker. Uh, this, this uh, this, this uh, this job assist our, our traffic operations um, specialist in assisting with help with our, with any kind of, with any kind of uh, traffic signal failures we have, uh, replacements, all, all the things that, that he does on our, on our lighted intersections. Um, they also, he also helps assist with Julie locates, whether they're, they're scheduled or emergency locates. Uh, between the, those two workers, they, they uh, they cover all of our on-call and, and emergency uh, um, calls that we get, whether it's a, a knockdown traffic signal, um, flashing light signals. Um, so right now, we only have, we currently have one person working in that, that section of our engineering department. Um, we've, we've always had two, and it's, it's definitely a very, very busy, um, a very busy section of our operation, and uh, and staff is looking, is, is uh, requesting approval to, to hire this, this position out.
Move to approve, Went.
Second, Schoonmaker.
We have a motion by Went, a second by Alderman Schoonmaker. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoonmaker.
Aye.
Walton.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next item is item number 12, and it'll be presented this evening by Tony Lodi, our utilities general manager. He's the hiring and promotion of a water distribution mechanic. Tony?
Yes, good evening, your honor. You are right. We recently promoted a water distribution mechanic to water distribution crew leader, and uh, so we're now requesting a resolution to uh, for an exception to the hiring moratorium to backfill for that water distribution mechanic. Uh, staff recommends approval of this resolution.
Move to approve, Went.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Went and a second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoonmaker.
Aye.
Walton.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Uh, Tony has another, hiring and promotion, technology and systems integrator.
Yes, thank you, your honor. This item is for uh, an exception to the hiring moratorium to recruit and hire a technology and systems integrator. Uh, this position has been vacant for a number of years. Uh, we actually attempted to try and do without this position unsuccessfully, and, and when I talked to our treatment plant operations uh, managers, uh, this is the number one um, request that they have when it comes to personnel. Uh, as you know, technology is increasing more and more in our treatment plants, and this person would be uh, integral to uh, assuring that the individual systems within the treatment plant integrate into our supervisory controls. And in addition, I think this position would also be helpful to frontline managers also to maximize or optimize uh, the use of our work data. Uh, so with that, staff recommends approval of this resolution.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Waldron, a second by Alderman Potter. Is there any discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Alderman Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoonmaker.
Aye.
Walton.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Tony. The next item, item 14, will be presented by Rod Schick, Municipal Services General Manager. It is for the hiring and promotion of groundskeepers park maintenance. Rod?
Yes. Good evening, thank you, your honor. Um, yes, this item is uh, to seeking an exception to the hiring moratorium to fill the two vacant groundskeeper positions in parks maintenance. These are our entry-level positions that are responsible for mowing, cleaning restrooms, all sorts of entry-type level work there. These employees also transition into our leaf collection program and then into uh, the snow removal in the winter months. It's uh, the five-year budget was approved uh, by the park board at a recent park board meeting and presented to you at the last meeting, and so tonight we're seeking approval of this, and staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Potter, a second by Alderman Waldron. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoonmaker.
Aye.
Walton.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Rod. The next item is item number 15. It is Chapter 20 amendments, snow emergency parking enforcement strategy. It'll be presented this evening by Dirk Price, Corporation Counsel.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, counsel. Uh, this is to report back on the enforcement mechanisms for the snow routes. Um, you may recall you tasked uh, all of us, Marty, me, the mayor, and Alderman Schoonmaker with uh, mentioned going back and talking to not only our, our snow management team, but also to some of the senior drivers and getting some ideas, and on the line tonight is Brandon Pinal, who uh, took advantage of that invitation uh, to sit down and talk with the mayor and with another driver, Josh, I think was his first name. Um, and out of that conversation that they had with the mayor came this uh, idea for how to do some progressive enforcement. The problem with the enforcement at the moment is it's nothing to DEFCON 5. We're doing nothing or we're towing. And we've tried some educational things this year to try and get, uh, make some headway between the mayor making announcements, getting one of our plow drivers on TV, uh, and doing some educational pieces, and those seem to have some beneficial effect, and so what we're proposing now is that um, we work to do an educational campaign with courtesy notices, and we ratchet up to violations, and strategic towing. We don't have that many towing resources, as we discussed, but we can do some, and they can be strategic and, and at a different level. Uh, and again, that would be progressive and educational uh, as all part of it. Um, I have to clean up some of the language then around declaring a snow emergency. It, it's not a great set of fit-together things, uh, so I want to clean that up. That's in there as well. Uh, and so that's what I presented to you is that, that kind of language. Now, in terms of the enforcement, we want our um, uniformed sworn officers doing uniformed sworn officer things. We've talked to Permar, thanks to Keith in Finance. Finance runs Permar. In future years, when they're back to enforcing our downtown parking, they will just move over and do this as directed by the chief so that we don't have to have sworn officers do it. So they will set that up in the contract going forward. For this year, we do have a proposal for them, but to be frank with you, I don't know that we'll ever get there, because by the time this ordinance goes into effect, it's four weeks from now. And I don't know that we'll need them on-call or doing any of that for a snow emergency, so I think that for the remainder of the winter of 2020, 2021, we're good. We have a, a thing to do with Permar when we bring them back, and they'll be available to do it, so that takes it off of uh, chief's plate, other than chief directing them what routes we're gonna go, courtesy, violation, and tow. And that towing piece will have to be done with the managers, JD Rod, the chief, Brandon, all getting together and talking about it. Um, so I'm recommending that we move forward with these changes to the snow emergency section and the penalties. The penalties would be just like any other ticket. We run them through the same resource. Uh, and then lastly, um, I did get some feedback from Alderman Parker with an idea um, to try and download contact information through an email blast system, for example, so that in the future, if we're going to start to ticket the mayor's considering a snow emergency, that we can send out an email blast to those contacts. If we get a summer intern, I think that that's a, a doable project, and we'd look to do that. I may put one of my summer interns on it, but um, uh, so that's in the background is something we can add, but I don't think it's essential to this ordinance. I, I would like to move forward with the ordinance.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Moyer and a second by Alderman Potter. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Went.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoonmaker.
Aye.
Walton.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you, Dirk, and thank you, Brendan, for walking it through with me. I think that we all just kind of assumed that we could issue tickets, and that was never an allowed thing in our previous ordinance, so I'm glad that we are addressing that, so thank you, counsel. Um, I do not believe we have another this evening. Is that correct? So we're gonna move into our informations. First item is the pickleball complex, presented by our Parks Recreation Director, Eric Griffith.
Thank you, mayor and city council. So I wanted to go through this project really quick. This started way back in middle to late 2019, and uh, it's, it's finally coming. Um, in the next, hopefully, four to six to eight weeks, we'll break ground once the weather is nice, so. First, I just wanted to show where it all started back in 2019 to what it looks like in 2020, 20, 2021. Um, originally, it was going to be um, further away from the, the bath house for the swimming pool, six courts. Um, we were gonna repurpose some lighting, um, but the city had some leftover, some light poles, and we also had um, uh, some just regular fencing. So move forward to 2021, it's gone through probably three different redesigns. Uh, so not only are we going to update um, the, the swimming pool parking lot, but we're also gonna add on to that, so it's a shared parking lot. We moved it closer to the bath house because um, there's a sidewalk that leads to the end of the bath house that has a, a bathroom that you're able to use on the outside, so then they have a restroom. There's eight pickleball courts now. There's um, musco lighting, um, there's wind screens, there's four shade structures in the middle. Um, almost twice as much parking as previously. Um, this, this is gonna be the nicest um, complex in the Quad Cities by far. One of the reasons why it went from six to eight, along with a bigger parking lot, is the Friends of Moline Pickleball. This picture was taken back in December, and uh, they pledged back in 2019 that they were gonna raise $100,000 towards the project. To date, they're just under $110,000, and they are continuing to raise money um, each and every day. That $110,000 is pretty amazing, because they have planned, along with Parks and Rec staff, many different um, events that we've wanted to have in the last year, and every single one of them has been canceled. So they've been raising this without having events, and um, they have over 120 donors, I believe. And then uh, some pictures of some of the, the items there up in the far top right corner, the, we're gonna have four of those different shade structures that are in there. The, that's the color design of what the courts will look like. They will have uh, the bottom left will have black um, shade screen, or uh, wind screens, and then we'll also have a fence guard um, on top, right in the middle. And then, like I said, musco lighting um, is doing the lighting. The lighting is set up where it will only turn on if you hit a button, um, so we, it doesn't run throughout the, the evening um, until the park closes. So you hit a button, it'll last for about an hour. It'll do kind of like a warning s- like strobe a little bit to show that you have 15 minutes left. You can go back and hit it. Uh, and the lights won't be able to turn on till about a half hour before sunset, and that'll be set up through um, our phones, so if we ever have a problem, uh, myself or someone from the parks, um, we'll be able to adjust that from our phone, so it's really gonna be um, top-of-the-line facility. We've already had uh, groups reach out about wanting to do tournaments, and so we're working through that right now with the park board. And then last, just showing the breakdown, so the base bid was 512,000. Um, the lowest one was Miller Trucking and Escavating at uh, just under 524,000. The breakdown between uh, the funding from Park Board, or from the, the city of Moline and then the Friends of Moline Pickleball, we're hoping to break ground April 1st, or right around there, hopefully a little bit sooner than that, and then a timeline of eight to 12 weeks, so hopefully um, sometime in June. So we're very excited about this. Haven't um, brought this to you guys yet, and just wanted to show you how excited Park Board is. It's probably one of our biggest projects that we've had in a, a really long time, so we're excited. Any questions?
Alderman Parker.
Yeah, so this is really cool, and I know it's been in the works for a long, long time, so this is awesome, but just one question. When this does, does get up and running, is it going to be, um, do you have to reserve the court, or is it gonna be open courts? How, how's that gonna work? And, and uh, I, I might have a follow-up question. Go ahead.
Yep, just like our tennis courts, they're open to the public. We will be um, we'll be running a couple of our own tournaments and um, lessons throughout the year um, at this facility, and then we are coming up with a fee structure if an outside group wants to um, rent the facility for a tournament, um, for the.
So do you have plans, because I think it's gonna be well-used. Um, do you have plans where um, you know, they, they can be on it for only a certain period of time, and then they, you know, you can't be there all day long, you know, so other people can use it?
Correct. We're working through the rules, and I'm actually gonna present the rules to um, park board in March, and basically we'll say and out, if, if the courts are busy and there's people waiting, to limit your play for singles for an hour and doubles for an hour and a half. And that's kind of the standard between many uh, facilities that I've seen, um, their rules and regulations for the, for the courts.
Great, well, congratulations. This is an awesome project. Thank you.
Okay.
It is very exciting, Eric. Great, great job.
Hmm, thank you.
Thank you to the entire board. Thank you, board.
Good job.
If I presented you.
Thank you, mayor.
Um, the next item is also an informational. It's the library five-year budget. Brian Lear, Library Director, and we have Sue here as well.
Well, thank you, your honor and counsel. Good evening. Uh, similar to what Parks and Rec did uh, at your last meeting, uh, this is a protected five-year budget uh, for the library. Um, in your packets, there was an overview of the budget, uh, but I wanted to give you just a, a couple of minutes of detail. So I just thought I'd dive in with revenues to begin with. Over the course of the five-year budget, um, the library revenues are generally flat uh, with less than a 1% increase. Um, as you know, of course, the library is very dependent on funding from property tax and uh, any other subsidy that the city can provide, with over 92% of those revenues coming from taxes. Um, in trying to provide um, forecast for our revenues, we use the last full non-pandemic year as a benchmark for our revenue expectations. Um, we expect uh, to continue feeling the impact of the pandemic on our revenues this budget year, but certainly um, over the next uh, five years, we expect those revenues to gradually grow back to those benchmark levels and uh, hopefully even a little bit beyond that. Um, as far as our expenditures go, uh, our largest expense is personnel. Uh, one of the standards for a public library in Illinois is that it's been at least 70% of its operating budget on salaries and benefits, and this budget certainly achieves that. Uh, cumulatively through 2025, our expenditures breakout is approximately 74% for personnel-related expenditures, uh, 10% for facilities costs, uh, 10% for collection, and then just a little bit less than 6% for the remainder of our miscellaneous expenses. Uh, when we put this together, we really emphasized high-quality services to the community through a vibrant collection, through plenty of open hours, and sufficient staff to carry out our mission both now, and um, with enough flexibility to allow us to um, uh, uh, be flexible enough to consider new and emerging library services. So starting in 2022, this five-year budget does include funding for seven-day-a-week library service uh, with Sunday hours, Labor Day through Memorial Day. Um, we budgeted for the state recommended allocations for the con-collection, which is something that we have, you know, quite honestly fallen a little bit short on over the past few years. And then also starting uh, in 2022, we have budgeted for 29 full-time positions and uh, four seasonal library page positions, which gets us uh, close to our pre-pandemic staffing levels. So this budget does include all current library employees um, through the year 2025, however, we know um, that turnover at some point is gonna be likely, um, as 40% of our employees are gonna become retirement-eligible uh, by the end of 2025. as 40% of our employees are going to become retirement-eligible by the end of 2025. The biggest thing that we wanted to do for you is really just make a conscious effort to not underrepresent our needs over the next five years. Through the process, I think we're very pleased. Starting in 2023 and beyond, we project our annual expenditure increases to be less than 2% a year. So that's kind of it in a nutshell right now. There's no ask from the library. This is just follow-up on council's request for a five-year budget. We do feel like there's going to be opportunity towards the end of the budget year this year to get our staffing levels back up to 29 employees. We're currently short a position in our circulation division and one in our children's position. Both of those are frontline service employees that are going to be important to us as we begin to emerge from the pandemic and we want to expand our hours and our service levels. So again, thank you for the opportunity to share this information with you. I wanted to echo Eric's comments from a couple of weeks ago that I thought that this was a really, really helpful exercise to go through. Wanted to say thanks to Carol and Lori Finance for their assistance in the process. And of course, want to mention that we do have Sue Blackall, our library board president, here with us tonight, too. I'm sure she or I will be happy to answer any questions you have now or anytime about the library.
I have a question for you. So the community is very excited to have the library back open, and I was wondering what the experience has been. What is, are there, is the public behaving differently after the pandemic? Or what's the good news that's come out of this?
Well, it's definitely a little bit different field in the library right now. We're having about 250 to 350 a day of people come through the library. The public has been really good. We do require masks, social distancing. When you come into the library, you're going to see a lot of plexiglass up like you do here. But the experience has been very good. So right now, our services are still limited. You know, we're not doing meeting rooms, for example. Our study rooms are not, haven't been used. We're not doing passport appointments yet, but we hope to those service levels here.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any other questions?
Yes, Alderman Morgan.
Brian, on your expenditure summary, I got a couple of questions. First of all, on facilities costs, I see in 2021, it's 10.8, going up to or going to 9.9 in 2022, and then up a little bit as they go over the years. And yet, on the collection budget, we're at 2021, we're at 5.7. And like you said, we need to get up, and I couldn't agree with you more. It's all about a collection, if you're a heavy user of the library like my wife and I are. And yet, on the collection budget, we go 9.9 in 2022, and then we lower to 2023, lower 2024, and then lower still in 2025. Is that because we've made the standard from the state at that point? Or why is the collection budget going down over the five years?
I think you're exactly right. That the standard from the state is a 12% number, 12% of your operating budget. Plus, we look at our revenues, but that minus any transfers into the library or any use of reserves. So I think once you hit that specific dollar amount at the 12%, then we were satisfied with that. I think that that provides good service.
Well, I appreciate seeing the collection budget go up. Thank you very much. And thank you to the board, Sue.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Alderman Went?
Thank you, your honor. I had a chance actually to talk with Brian and actually Eric a little bit about this, and I think that it was a good exercise as well. And really, thank you guys for digging in and giving us kind of a roadmap to try to figure out what we are going to need to do to be able to provide the revenues and funding to meet these things moving forward. As Brian and I discussed and Eric and I discussed earlier, one of the things I do believe that this kind of has shown, though, is my concern with the top-line number of the revenue coming from property taxes. As we know, our property taxes, a larger and larger portion of that has, over the years, been eaten up or taken up by our pension obligations. Now, that goes maybe 60 cents of every dollar that we collected a couple of years ago, maybe 68% a year before last. This year, I think it's 76 cents out of every dollar that we collect goes to those pensions. And so the rest of that pie obviously continues to shrink as those pensions take on more. And so what I'd like to do is, I love what you've done here, but I think what we need to do for our homework moving through this year is to direct the finance department to come back to us with a five-year projection on what our property tax levy is going to look like over the next five years, assuming the same rate, and what our projected allocations are going to be for the pensions and how that is going to affect the parks and the library through this. And as we talked before, I don't want anybody to have any concern, you know, if there's, if that pie is shrinking that we're not going to be able to bring the money for the library and for the parks out of the property tax pocket. We'll surely be able to take it out of the general fund pocket because of all of the debt reduction we've done over the last four years. But, so I guess with that, I'd like to make a motion that we direct the finance department to come back to us with a five-year projection on property tax and how that's going to look like based on the parameters I just discussed.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Went and a second by Alderman Moyer. Alderman Went, would you please be concise about what your motion is so that we can capture it properly?
Sure. Direct staff to give us a five-year projection on property taxes in the city based on keeping the tax rate at its current level and what that will look like over the next five years, which will include what the projections are for our requirements to fund the pensions.
Did you capture it with me?
I think so.
Janine got it.
And I believe, just to qualify that a little bit, is, and I think Carol had told me this, in the next couple of weeks or so, we should be getting the actuarial accounting for our pensions to give us an idea of what that allocation is going to need to be over the next five years, or the projections of it, anyway.
Are there any discussions or questions? Alderman Potter?
I guess I'd need some further clarification. Are we talking about the levy amount? Or are we talking about attempting to keep the rate relatively close to the same?
So the idea would be to keep the rate about the same because as we all know, like TIF number one is going to retire here in the next couple of years. And so all of that EAV is going to come back onto it. So to keep the rate the same, our levy is going to go up because all the additional EAV is going to be dumped on top of us. There's going to be growth over the next five years, hopefully, in our EAV. So the levy will grow with that as well. And that's why we're asking for that projection with the assumption that the rate would stay constant.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Walden?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Were there any other questions for Brian before he sits down?
Just to thank you.
Yep, thank you so much. And thank you to you and your board, Sue. I know it's a lot of work to go through. Okay. Do we have any public comment this evening? Is there anyone that'd like to address the council? With that, thank you. Hearing no public comment, and without any further business for the committee or the whole, I'd like to close out the committee as a whole and go into our council meeting. Will there be an invocation this evening, Alderman Went?
Yes, but it will be stored.
Thank you. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we gather here to do the city's business, let us focus on what is in the best interest of all of our residents. Let us err on the side of transparency and focus on those things that help all of our residents and avoid focusing on special interests. Our job is as the voice of the residents and taxpayers, and that may we continue to be good stewards of those tax dollars that we are entrusted to spend on their behalf and to continue to ask the questions on their behalf and provide those answers to the public to whom we are entrusted to represent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Present.
Parker?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Potter?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
Schoonmaker?
Present.
Walden?
Present.
Berg?
Present.
Your honor, I request approval of committee of the whole, council and executive session minutes of February 9th, 2021, and appointments made during committee of the whole on February 23rd, 2021. Second reading ordinances. Council bill 3002-2021, an ordinance amending chapter four alcoholic liquor of the Moline Code of Ordinances by adding section 4-3325, option 8, retailers onsite pouring, and amending section 4-3317, option 1, outdoor use. Section 4, 3324, option 7, retailers onsite outdoor special use. Section 4-3208, license fees, and section 4-3319, option 3, caterers retail. Council bill 4002-2021, a special ordinance granting a permanent waiver to chapter 28, streets and sidewalks of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section 28-3200, when required, engineers' general responsibility, temporary certificate of occupancy variances, subparagraph A, and chapter 35 zoning and land development, section 35-4218 sidewalks, and $10,800 payment into the sidewalk fund in lieu of construction of sidewalk along 38th Avenue for property located at 4138th Avenue, Moline, and granting a temporary modification to section 28-3200A and section 35-4218 of the Moline Code of Ordinances to delay the installation of sidewalk along John Deere Road, requiring the property owner at sidewalk along the John Deere frontage at such time that sidewalk is edged to the south side of the property for property located at 4138th Avenue, Moline. Resolutions. Council bill 1043-2021, a resolution authorizing the approval of a resolution for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code for Motor Fuel Tax, section 21-00000-00GM, in the amount of $1,070,000. Council bill 1044-2021, a resolution authorizing the approval of a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code of Motor Fuel Tax, section 21-00280-00RP, 11th Avenue C, 52nd Street Court to 54th Street, in the amount of $315,000. Council bill 1045-2021, a resolution authorizing the approval of a resolution of improvement under the Illinois Highway Code of Motor Fuel Tax, section 21-00279-00RP, 22nd Avenue, 3800 block of 41st Street, in the amount of $915,645. Council bill 1046-2021, a resolution authorizing the approval of a resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code for Motor Fuel Tax, section 21-00282-000RP, 34th Avenue, 53rd Street to 56th Street Place, 56th Street Court and 56th Street Place to the dead end, in the amount of $787,750.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, Parker.
Second, Went.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Went. Roll call, please. Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Walden?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Non-consent agenda resolutions. Council bill 1047-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and chief of police to execute an equitable sharing agreement and certification between the federal government and the Moline Police Department, setting forth the requirements for participation in the equitable sharing program and certifying all receipts and expenditures of federal forfeiture funds, property, and interest during the last fiscal year.
Motion to approve 1047-2021, Parker.
Second, Went.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Went. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Walden?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Council bill 1048-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attested letters of engagement with executive search consultant Baker Tilly, US LLP, Chicago, Illinois, to begin a search for candidates for the positions of director of engineering, city engineer, and director of human resources for the city of Moline.
Motion to approve 1048-2021, Parker.
Second, Went.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Nay.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Walden?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay?
That motion carries.
Council bill 1049-2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a letter of engagement with Strategia Consulting LLC for legislative lobbying services for the city of Moline.
Motion to approve 1049-2021, Parker. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker and a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Alderman Walden?
Your honor, do we have a feel for how much this will cost in 2021?
So I don't think that we actually have a restriction unless it is a not-to-exceed, but...
Yeah, it's $5,000 a month, and we anticipate the two things that are going on right now in the session that we're hiring them for, namely I-74 bridge property issue, where we were first in line, and then also the issue, that's related to the issues around the campus. We think that's going to get through the session. That's about four months.
Thank you.
Any other discussion items or discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Walden?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays?
That motion carries.
Council bill 1007-2021R, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a program funding agreement between the city of Moline and the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the city's acceptance of $250,000 in grant funding. And the city shall enter into the funding agreement with the Illinois Housing Development Authority and do all things necessary, including the additional language that was added, to execute all assurances and certifications to the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the Strong Communities Program Round 1 Grant, and authorizing the Community Economic Development Department to begin work upon execution of the program funding agreement between the city of Moline and the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the Strong Communities Program Round 1 Grant, to do all things necessary to implement said grant requirements.
Motion to approve 1007-2021R, Parker. Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Parker, a second by Alderman Moyer. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing no discussion. Roll call, please.
Alderman Went?
Aye.
Potter?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
Schoonmaker?
Aye.
Walden?
Aye.
Berg?
Abstain due to my membership on the board.
Williams?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one abstention?
That motion carries.
And that is all I have this evening, your honor.
Thank you so much, Janine.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to go around the council chambers for council business. I'll begin with Alderman Williams.
Nothing, your honor.
Thank you, Alderman Parker.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Potter.
Yes, Your Honor. Some time ago, council undertook a job to look at all the TIF districts, and an outcome of that study was a recent article in the paper. I think it was titled something, "The Effect of Fingers Pointed." I want to be clear when I begin my comments that I supported that motion. I think it was a good project. It was something that was, needed to be done. I think it's important that we've done that. In fact, it was, it was something that should have been done some time ago. The issue I have is that comments that were made and things that were said, I don't think are entirely accurate. And I'm particularly not happy with the fact that when we question people's motives, it's one thing if we disagree with the specific proposals they bring forward, as for instance, the River Station Project proposal. That one, that specific proposal went through DBMT, PMT, and was approved at both of those with members of this body on those things before it came to council. And then the council did a review, and we're moving on with that. And I support the way we're moving forward with that. As I said, you know, when we begin to question people's motives, I think that's totally beyond where we should be. In addition, you know, comments that were made that somehow people left town specifically because of things that happened, because of these individual things, I think are inaccurate. And I think what it ends up doing is it just adds to the vitriol. And I would caution staff and members of this body to conduct themselves in a manner of respect. It's okay to disagree without being disagreeable. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Potter. Alderman Moyer.
Yes, Your Honor. I just want to bring up the library again on a separate issue from the budget. Just that, I've had an opportunity to go in there since it's been open again in February, and it's very active. There's a lot going on, and I know people really appreciate it, especially my daughter, who has been using the children's department, and they're great. They've got activities for the kids. There's a Dr. Seuss program coming up this Thursday, which you can register for and get a packet. You know, just really fantastic stuff, and I just want to thank the library for their hard work.
Thank you, Alderman Moyer. Um, let's see. I lost my sequence. Alderman Schoemaker.
Nothing further, Your Honor, this evening.
Thank you. Alderman Waldron.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Berg.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. I have a huge shout-out to the police department and the fire department and the public works department for the activity on the river. I had an opportunity for the rescue and the retrieval that happened on the river. It was freezing weather. I have a friend of mine that's a tow truck driver, and he commented to me that he'd never imagined anything like that or seen anything like that, the way that your teams interacted. He said it was like a choreographed dance, that you were so effective and efficient and worked so well together. It was incredibly impressive. So, you know, we were all in our homes, warm and safe, and you were exposed to risk and danger to keep our community safe and take care of our community. And I just want to express my sincerest gratitude, not only for doing it, for doing it so well. So, thank you. And then I would like to open it up to staff. Does staff have anything for us this evening?
No.
Nothing?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then I, oh, Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, I just wanted to draw your attention to some changes in the criminal justice system. This week, Governor Pritzker signed House Bill 3653, which will drastically change the criminal justice system in the state of Illinois over the next few years. So really, I've kind of passed along some information to you in our bi-weekly reports. I'll continue to do that. I don't have a lot of answers for you right now. I know I'll be turning to my favorite attorney, Dirk Price, and his law firm for their great guidance on these legal issues that really have kind of uncharted waters for us right now, working with I-Let's-Bee and our training division to try to figure out how to get this implemented in our organization. I think the city of Moline and the Moline Police Department have been leaders in a lot of these areas and already are in a good position, for example, like body cameras, which you probably heard a lot about over the last few months. And obviously, the Moline Police Department already has body cameras. In fact, we're on our second iteration of body cameras, and we thankfully signed a new five-year contract with our body cameras that probably will see a significant price increase for some of those agencies jumping on. But we're locked in for the next five years. So we're already ahead of the game in some of these areas. But this is a massive 764-page bill that will take us quite some time to figure out, to learn, implement. And I think it will also change the service delivery that our citizens will see in our community and probably what you will hear as elected officials as well from the service of the police department. But my job is to get that implemented at our police department and do it well. And so we'll continue to have high standards, and you will have a great police department that we will try to do our best with that, but there'll probably be a learning curve along the way. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. I'm sure you've seen a lot about that. I don't have a lot of great answers on some of the top hot-button questions because it's so new. But over the next few months, I'm sure that we'll get some guidance and continue to keep you updated on those as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any other staff? I'd now like to open it up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the council this evening? Hearing none. Do we have a motion? Alderman Williams.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of pending probable or imminent litigations, 5 ILCS 120/2C11, and appointment of employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, 5 ILCS 122C1.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Williams and a second by Alderman Potter. Roll call, please. Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Potter.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
Schoemaker.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Berg.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. That motion carries. Would you all please clear the council chambers?